Here is, uh, our block, straight up and down. Our block, straight up and down, uh, Mr. Paulson, if you'd be so kind to give us an invocation, please.
Right here. Right here, we thank you for the opportunity to give praises to your name. We thank you for this day that you could add us with our common sense and we thank you for the blessing that you've stored upon us. We thank you for everything we're about to take in, that we have a clear mind and clear destination of what we want to do. We want to do this meeting in a professional manner, address any issues that may come about, and when we leave this place, that we will all be on one accord. Whether we agree to, we can agree to disagree, but we want to do the best we can for this county, for our citizens, and for the employees of this county, presenting town council. So we thank you right now for everything you're gonna do. We ask you a rest of your mercy as always. Amen.
Guys, um, seeing your packet, uh, need to... Approval of the agenda, as old business approved, the budget ordinance, discuss and consider approval of the nine-one-one contract with the Anson County. Down here, the new business, uh, consider approval of with LKC, Stormwater. Uh, also, the, uh, consider approval of engagement letter with the new attorney. Speaking of approving engagement letter from Wade Smith, for the sewer project, I'm sorry, the sewer project. All right, and consider approval of the town management employment agreement.
Echo motion to approve the gentleman's mayor.
I second.
All in favor?
Before we go on to the next, I, um, uh, I'm gonna speak to town for a minute. While Mr. Ross and I attended a grant training for the CDBG, um, I infrastructure project, for a million dollar grant that we were awarded mandatory training, and it was, uh, uh, how would you put it, Mr. Ross? A lot. Um, so because of this training, I wanted to speak to you for a minute. Um, as you know, there is a grant writer in the budget for the twenty-five, twenty-six fiscal year. A dedicated grant writer is critical for the town of Wade's Borough to effectively, effectively secure and manage the external funding necessary to support key community initiatives and infrastructure projects. This role not only identifies and applies for competitive grant opportunities, but also ensures that each submission meets stringent federal and state compliance standards. Once funding is awarded, the position will be responsible for detailed and accurate reporting, an essential requirement of all grants, especially federal grants, uh, much like the CDBG grant. Failure to meet these reporting standards can result in the withdrawal of current funds and disqualification from future funding opportunities, and this can occur in the middle of the project. The town is currently managing several major grants that are vital to its progress and development, including the ARPER funding, the three separate projects totaling fourteen million, nine hundred ninety-five thousand, five hundred dollars, a one point four four million dollar CDBG neighborhood revitalization grant, a three million dollar CDBG I infrastructure project, and a four hundred thousand dollar stormwater assessment, which is expected to lead to additional funding needs for implementation. The complexity and size of these awards make it critical to have a dedicated professional overseeing every stage of the grant life cycle. Without a qualified individual managing millions of dollars in funding, the town risks mismanagement, noncompliance, and the loss of crucial financial support. Furthermore, because a significant portion of the grant writer's time is spent directly on individual grants, like was mentioned last week, a portion of their salary will most likely be charged to each grant based on time allocation on that grant, making this position, this recommended position, not only essential, but also fiscally efficient. Thank you.
So, if you have a question, so we don't have that position right now, but if we get that position, we got some grants that's already been written, or we would be subject to lose over that? Is that what you're just saying?
If you approve the budget, then we can find a qualified grant writer, an experienced grant writer. That person will not only be writing, finding grants, writing the grants, but once the grants are awarded, along with the grants we already have, that person will be doing all of the monitoring and the recording of those grants.
And, and what's the salary of this person?
I'm sorry?
Salary, do you know the salary of them?
Um, I think we put a range of eighty to eighty-four thousand plus benefits, and that, um, after research, we feel that's the going rate for an experienced grant writer, and that's what I put it in the budget for.
So...
So notice the cost with their statutory and taxes and all that in the end?
He wanted to know, uh, I'm, I'm sorry, Chipper, you wanna know what the total salary is with fringe?
With fringe, tax, uh, statutory, health insurance, all are an idea for the, uh, retail insurance.
I did not bring the salary information with me, but to round up, I would say a hundred thousand.
And so who's managing these grants for us now, the ones we all have taken that we had all along? Uh, who are, who's managing that now? And it's, I'm, it's your hire, heading out with the town manager's obligation to manage things. What I'm trying to do is just the fiscal responsibility here, by ordinance, we had to hire you, and if, in the past, your responsibilities have been the responsibility of the town manager. Now that you are hired and you have a staff, shouldn't that free up some time between the town manager and you to at least administrate some different? Look at the league administering some of this for us, did I hear that right, Senator?
LKC.
Yeah, yeah, LKC.
LKC, well...
Yeah, the league is not, uh, managing the grant for us.
I mean, that's right. So what, what, what is, you know, if we're able to manage the grants we had, if there's another grant there that we thought was higher growth with, and slash that, and this and that, I understand the, the block grant, but it's only for like a million bucks, and we shouldn't have to make a hundred thousand dollar plus a year hiring commitment to someone, they're a million dollar package.
Well...
I'm saying, I don't think, I think we're jumping the gun here. Again, like you just said, we can deal with some of that expense into the budget for the grant. I, I understand completely what you're saying about the technicalities of, uh, uh, federal, uh, 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 grants. Believe me, if it's a number world itself, but you got to stick to training, both of you, one two days, and it seems like maybe y'all could plug in some of your expertise and knowledge from that training, and work the networks that you have made, uh, through, through this training. That leave your way maybe another year until we're in a better position to, to, uh, look at making a jump on, uh, a community current commitment to somebody like a grant writer.
Um, not to contradict you, sir, but after this two-day training, I've, I, and I, I think I can say this about widely too, there is no expertise. This is going... Going to that training actually convinced me even more that we needed a grant writer. I'm, I'm not up to it.
I would be perfectly not to, yeah.
I am not up to this, and I am not willing to put the town's financial stability at risk on this federal grant, because this project can be mid-cycle and we could lose this grant if in any way, shape, or form we mess up.
So, and, and you said, we don't want to do that, and I don't think there should be any salary increases for administration, at least those two positions, uh, for the next couple of years till we can mitigate that. Uh, I just, I've got to be just a little responsible, I, I put the budget, I put the other things, and I just really think that a grant writer right now is not in our best interest, I'll go along with whatever council says, I have to, but I'm going to record and say, but I really do not think that this is in our best interest to hire, make a permanent hiring commitment to a full-time grant writer at this time.
You want to ask, you still, Mr. Moore?
I'm done, yes, thank you.
Yeah, I got one more. Is, is there any way that we could, uh, say we hired a grant writer? Is there any way that we could, uh, put the cost of their salary, uh, in the grant? For example, if you have a grant that's gonna be a hundred thousand dollars, can they, uh, write in there a ten percent administrative, administration fee, uh, and get ten thousand dollars allocated towards their pay? Sort of paid as, as you go versus the town just obligated to a hundred thousand dollars?
It does depend, speaking for new grants. It does depend on the grant and how much they will allow. Every grant is different. And then the grant writer would, you know, have to keep meticulous time sheet records so we can charge the, um, the salary, salary expenses to that grant. As far as the grants that we currently have, I can't answer that question. I can research it and, and find out exactly if, you know, that is something that can be allocated.
Yeah, I, I'm not opposed to a grant writer, but I, I'm gonna be more comfortable, uh, paying as, as, as we go versus the town committing to that large of a salary, you know, administration costs has gone up over the last two years.
Well, so the, the salary has to be in the budget, if I had to find a place for it, so I put it in the administration budget. As time goes on, as we make that determination, how much of this can be charged to this grant, that grant, and this grant, those expenses will be moved out of the administration budget, a journal entry will be made, and the expenses will be moved to whatever grant. I also believe that a portion of this grant writer can also be charged to water sewer, especially when those grants that this person will be looking for will also be for water sewer, I would imagine.
That, that's correct.
Lots of infrastructure.
That's correct. So the majority of the grants that we're going after are the infrastructure grants, it's gonna be the cost grants. Uh, a lot of those grants have a ten percent, five percent, uh, allocation for admin costs, right? So, so if you write three grants for four million dollars, that person's salary will be covered, right?
Right.
Uh, this is nothing new. All across the country, small municipalities have grant writers, and it is a additional source of, you know, uh, for, for funds, right? And that's what, uh, that's why we thought that this would be a great idea for us to kind of go after some funds for our police department, for water sewer, uh, for finance, HR, uh, I mean, it's obviously, like I said, it's, it's something that can be very advantageous for, uh, a, a small town, and small towns across the country do it, they have grant writers. Um, the county just hired a grant writer, right, uh, to do the same thing, so, uh, I understand what Mr. Moore's saying, uh, but, uh, this is a way to get additional funds and additional resources, and that's why we thought it's important that we have a full-time person staff, that we can control what the person does, and the majority of this is about compliance, when you talk about grants, right? Uh, that's really important, particularly the infrastructure grants, okay? So that's why we thought it was, uh, you know, a good idea to have a, a, a full-time person staff.
Not, not concerned with that.
I think we're, we're, I think you, when a person could do, I think if we went a year to see what we can do without it, you can be as responsible as possible. I respect the notion that two or three grants and building that in, and Garrett, I can't believe you and I are almost agreeing on the topic. Uh, but when you're looking, and I mentioned this last week, and I mentioned that every time this is being brought up, that a grant writer's salary can be, or their, their, their fee can be written into the grant to administer it.
Correct.
Absolutely, yeah.
And that's why we felt so confident about making this decision, putting a grant...
I can't really hear you, Maureen, I'm just saying that I think if we're at a little tender, uh, uh, juncture of our, our finances, uh, uh, to be making that commitment without seeing some rubber hitting the road, maybe we're taking a couple of test drives, which we are able to do by canvassing different grant writers and seeing what they can do. Uh, there are lots of hungry people out there, and, uh, believe me, they know how to keep their time. They know that, uh, having these time sheets or any of these other, uh, uh, virtual, uh, or electronic, high management tools, and, uh, you do a couple of identity, uh, even the virtual, when they're working on it, this idea, and then it was up. So it's not just a one-sided thing, uh, it would be a two-sided thing, so that's just my biggest feelings. Thank you.
Yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm just, that hundred thousand dollars is... I understand we need grant, right, writer, I would love to have a grant writer, I would, I would prefer to push it down the road a little bit farther to see what it'll look like, but that's a hundred thousand dollars you're committing to a grant. And I'm not sure what, uh, I know we gotta, we gotta go with the budget, we got all these other obstacles in front of us, and I wish we could, my, me personally, I would have to push it down until we can do a little more research on it, if, if that makes sense to everybody. I just, I just don't wanna create that hundred thousand dollars today right now, we know what we need.
I think the training that Mr. Ross and I went to this week just cemented it for me, because, um, it, you know, yes, a hundred thousand dollars, but that's, that's a billion dollars. That's what concerns me. It's not so much about writing the grants at this point, that is important, but managing the grants and having met the stringent guidelines, um, it's just not comfortable.
Do, do we know anyone that went down this road, like, you know, hired a, what'd you say, the county hired one?
It's just, um, didn't he?
Uh, absolutely, every, all across the country, you look at, you look at, you look at cities, small and big, they all have grant writers on staff. I mean, it's, it's a part of that finance department, I mean, it's, it's something that they do, right?
Yes, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not of any disillusioned that we don't need one, my thing is, I like to pay as we go, that's just my thing. If it's some kind of way that...
Amen.
That we can, uh, assure we can pay as we go, uh, or, or, you know, make sure that the funds are recouped as we go, um, that's where I'm gonna be the most comfortable, I bet that's...
That would work if we only used the grant writer to find us the grant and to write the grant, but we're not gonna be able to use a contracted person to manage the grant, because they're not gonna have access to FMS and...
Let me, let me, I'm not cutting you. Did y'all want to say anything about this?
No, we, we, well, I'm listening.
Okay. Here, 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 here is in the next, uh, rest on the council and them building that grant writer, we need to go a different route, uh, saying that I've said on here a long time, I don't know how long now, but we've had one, a town manager used to just, as I said on here, they done it all. Yeah, we got in some, some things and all of that, and we cleaned it up when we hired you, okay, to, to manage the money and all of that. I think the scope of it, if you don't write a grant, we make, we have LKC that's looking at our grants, that's managing some grants now, okay, LKC.
That's correct.
LKC is managing some, and so at this point, we have a lot of things coming at us, and we gotta look down the road, we still have that fire truck, that's still there, we still have some things that are in the budget, but at this point, counsel, I just, we need to be a motion to, uh, with the grant or without a grant writer?
I mean, I would like to kick the can down the road, uh, if, 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 if it's money that the town of Wazeboro can, uh, can, uh, obtain, that's gonna make this place better operating, a better place to work, liberals, I sure know we all for that. Uh, again, though, however, we, it need to be some type of, uh, mechanism, some type of triggers to make sure that we ain't gonna hook for no hundred thousand dollars, that we get our money back, uh, quickly as possible. Um, however, however you can work that out, I'll go along with that. That's where I am.
You're saying, if you put them, they, they come back to it, uh, think about what they can do?
No, I don't really, I, I, I prefer not to oblate on it, make a decision on it, but, uh, I think there's a need, uh, the money kinda, you know, slot money.
You need to, uh, still, I guess.
We wish a lot, there's a hundred...
Counsel, uh, either, we need a motion to table this or to, uh, remove it from the, uh...
I, I like making motions table, I want some work permission, right? Cut it out.
I second.
Oh. We're gonna, we're gonna give courses, I'm giving the train for courses.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Manager, uh, table in there, how, what's, what's the, uh, time on that?
Or Mr. Attorney? Happy to jump in there, uh, I think what, what you've got in front of you is the, um, the passage of your budget, which is, would be the, what was presented to you, the entire thing. If you wanna take something out of the budget, my recommendation would be to make a substitute motion that does not include, includes everything in the budget, but the, the part that you wanna take out, if you wanna table something. So there'd be a substitute motion to approve the budget less the, um, the grant writer position.
So we're approving, we're approving the whole budget?
Um, we will approve a substitute amendment that we will approve everything but the grant writer.
And then what?
And then we, we, we don't have it.
I thought you said you were gonna table it.
No, he can just read it to us.
Read it and then? Then table it?
So, so what I'm understanding is you wanna approve the budget less the grant writer position, you wanna talk about that further. So you take the grant writer position out of this budget that you're passing tonight, um, and you can say table it if you'd like, but it would be a substitute motion to approve the budget less the grant writer position, for which you want to have more information to discuss at a later time.
Yeah, once, once, once the, uh, uh, additional, uh, information gathering and discussion takes place, is that something that we can, uh, add back on to the, uh, to the budget?
You would just add that to a, a future agenda for, for discussion?
I'm gonna be for that. I make a motion to make a, uh, approve the budget, uh, subsequent, subsequent of the grant writer position, to give the council more time to, uh, digest information.
I second.
Well, he, he said a question.
So, once we, the motion that, uh, Councilman Stubbs made is to put this on the background or put this aside for time being?
We visit, and...
To your business. So, are we still gonna go through everything else on the budget, or we're, or we're approving everything at this point?
I mean, if there, what, you have the grant writer, right?
Yeah, I, I, I want to, Mr. Grant.
All right, is there any other thing on the budget that council has an issue with other than the grant writer? Now's the time. Is there anything else on the budget?
Thank you.
Yeah, the, the, the one that we looked at, is there anything else on that?
You mean the one we're looking at right now?
No, we're looking at it last, okay. We're talking about over the past month and some change. Yeah, I'm cool with all the rest of it. I'm cool with it, I'm for the grant writer. Uh, we just need to hatch, hatch through some of, some of those issues financially, you know?
I'm there.
I don't wanna do that, I don't wanna do that.
So what's the motion on the table?
I second the motion.
She's saying we're gonna come back, so...
Second, no, no more in the budget while we do this. There's nothing else that's in the budget that we're gonna add and take away.
So, what, what I'm saying, so are we, we're talking with Mr. Ross on that?
No, 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 that's...
Just, just the budget.
Just the budget.
Budget that we've been looking at all this time.
All right. Just the budget, I'm good, I don't make y'all understand that, I was confused, I'm sorry.
No, we're good.
No. We're good.
Can I have the, as I got the motion?
Well, I'm, I'm, yeah, I'm, I'm saying to, uh, do this, uh, I don't, I would like the council to look at, um, funding for uptown Wazeboro to, uh, I'll just put it out there, we, we, I'm just putting it out there, okay? I'll be checking it, that's fine.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I do appreciate it.
I'm fine, I'm fine with what we say, but...
Maybe we get, but, maybe we get a, a, a grant writer to help write that thirty thousand dollars for the town, I'm for that.
Okay, I'll just put it out there, so, uh, I need to, all eyes on the, what Mr. Stubbs said, I need a show approval. All eyes, all, all... Mr. Paulson? Mr. No. Oh, yeah, he's, all right, thank you. All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, here we go. Discuss and consider approval of the nine-one-one contract with Anson County.
Yeah, American Member Counsel, um, we've had a contract that ends June thirtieth of this year, um, for emergency, uh, communication services with Anson County, nine-one-one. We, uh, have a contract before you that states that we will, um, provide funds for two dispatchers at, at the cost of hundred five thousand dollars per year, totaling two hundred nine thousand dollars at, uh, the end of, uh, July thirtieth, twenty twenty-seven. And so, uh, it's eight equal payments of thirty-six thousand dollars, thirty-six thousand, two hundred fifty dollars, um, broken up into those individual payments, and the, uh, once the two individuals are hired, that's when the payments will start, I think, sometime in July of this year.
The motion, all the negotiating, uh, been, been complete in regards to this contract, Mr. Uh, Mayor?
Yes, sir, we've, we've been, um, cooperating with the county for several months, in fact, since I came here last June. Um, this is, uh, something that, um, small towns usually do, we don't have the capacity or resources to have our own dispatch services, so the county provides that for other, uh, towns in, in Anson County, and we're the biggest one with the highest power.
Uh, so not gonna be no, uh, uh, participation or, uh, cost sharing with any other municipal in the, in the, in the county?
Sir, I can speak to for other towns, municipalities, uh, the, the county's pretty adamant about Wazeboro and our... about Waysboro and our volume, our call volume, and, um, which is very accurate, that we, we make up probably somewhere close to fifty percent of, uh, their call volume. So, um, again, we can afford to house a communication center. We did that before, uh, it didn't go very well, from my understanding, I lived here, but I'm understanding it didn't go very well. Uh, and it's, uh, upwards of almost a million dollars to, to have the equipment and the staff and all that, so, I recommend, I recommend that we, uh, contract with the county, what do you say?
I make a motion to approve the nine-one-one and contract.
I second that one. Questions?
I'm sorry?
Questions? Questions, all in favor?
Aye.
Now, the new business, ought to make a similar improvement of terms and conditions of the contract between the town of Waysboro and LKC, engineering for stormwater AI, AI grant.
Mayor, Member of Council, you have a contract before you. Uh, LKC is our engineering firm, and this is the contract for a debit to, uh, administrative grant of a stormwater AI grant of four hundred thousand dollars.
Any questions? No questions, need to vote? Need a motion?
I make a motion to approve this, yeah. Say it.
All in favor?
Aye.
B, consider approval of engagement letter from Warren and Smith, PA, for sewer project easement and, and then condemnation.
Mayor, Member of Council, this is a engagement letter for a law firm to, uh, conduct, um, combination services for like twenty-five, uh, pieces of property. Uh, this is a ARCA grant, a nine point five million dollar ARCA grant. Uh, there's about twenty-five parcels that we need to go into this process for. This is specialized process, um, this firm, uh, I think out of Wilmington specializes in combination. And, uh, the, uh, we recommend that we contract with this law firm. These funds will come out of Warren Sewer Fund, so it's a resource that doesn't open up.
So, move.
Questions?
Who's saying?
Go ahead, say it.
Questions? Need a motion?
Motion, aye.
Set. Need to vote?
Aye.
Uh, C, consider approval of the town management involving...
That should be a closed session.
Yeah.
And need to go to the old session to approve it?
Yeah.
Need a motion to go in closed session?
I make a motion to go in closed session.
I second.
Aye.